...features four candidates who are looking for your vote for one of two available seats on the Niagara Falls City Council. The candidates will be questioned tonight by Mark Shear, Regional News Director of the Niagara Gazette, and Tom Darrow, host on WJJL Talk Radio. To introduce the candidates to you alphabetically, we have Alicia Kenyon, the endorsed, one of two endorsed Democratic candidates, Dante Miles, an endorsed Democratic candidate, John Spanbauer, an endorsed Republican candidate, and incumbent and endorsed Republican candidate, Kenny Tompkins. Each candidate will now have two minutes for an opening statement, and we'll begin with Alicia Kenyon.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody, and thank you to our hosts, thank you to the other candidates for putting yourselves out there and for your commitment to wanting to better this community. For me, this election comes down to who is it that you would want to hire for this position? I am the Executive Director of a multimillion dollar company that spans six counties. I am the Treasurer of Live NF, a grassroots organization. I was formerly a Commissioner of the Niagara Falls Housing Authority, and I sat on the Continuing Care Retirement Community Council, which is a statewide policymaking board. For that, I was the Chair of their Regulatory Reform Committee, and the sole purpose of that was trying to make New York State regulations more business-friendly while also keeping in mind the rights of our older adults. I am also a wife, a mother to my beautiful daughter, Finley Scarlett, who many of you have seen on some of my mellers. I am a foster mother to two beautiful and strong little girls. Affectionately, my husband calls me Miss Niagara Falls because of my commitment and love for this community. I have the leadership experience, the passion, the drive to learn that which I don't know, and hopefully, with your help, I will be able to serve you all as our next City Councilwoman.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Dante Miles.
I would like to thank the Niagara Gazette and Niagara USA Chambers for hosting this event. I would first like to say that I have not a doubt in my mind that everyone on this stage has a passion for the city. With that being said, what sets me aside is that my consistent and constant presence in the community and also my consistency with holding our local government accountable. I've been a musician for over twenty years, and one thing that I've learned is that sometimes I play a solo piece, and with that solo piece, it might be pleasing to the ear. However, when you pair that with other instruments, those sounds create harmony, and that's really what I'm trying to bring to the council, to the city of Niagara Falls, the song of Niagara Falls throughout the community. I'd like us to reimagine what it would look like to build a city that's so strong and so resilient that people flood to come and see what we're creating. Better Niagara Falls, a model city, a new Niagara Falls. Thank you.
Mr. Spanbauer.
Thank you to our sponsors. I'd also like to thank, as usual, Alicia, the candidates on this stage. They all care for the city, and they want to do what's best for the city, and I wish you all luck. As a lifelong resident of Niagara Falls, I have seen where the city has been, where we currently are at, and the positive direction we can head with the right leadership. I want to be your leader, and I want to work with others to move this city forward. I grew up on 20th and West Al Avenue and was raised in a home of five siblings. I was very fortunate to be raised by two loving adults, my parents. My siblings and I grew up in a time of hand-me-down clothes, instant milk, and my parents worked numerous jobs to make ends meet. So I have some understanding of the hard times that our citizens have in Niagara Falls, New York. Many people I know love living in this city but immensely fear the direction this city is heading. I have referred to Arthur Sholkoff on numerous occasions during my campaign. Sholkoff, who was elected Mayor of Niagara Falls in 1896, stated, "Municipal government is a business, not politics." If elected, I will use the skills I have obtained in my thirty-five years of experience in the private sector to run this city like a business. I have been told by people, "You can't run government like business." My response, "We'd better start changing the way we operate this government because we sure as hell can't run it like we have been now." I will bring to this city a leadership style that will rely on my experience in administration and the development implementation of balanced budgets and the ability to collaborate with a cross-section of people that have allowed me to be a successful administrator. I do not consider myself a politician. I have learned a lot since I started this process. I know as a novice politician, I have a lot to learn, but I can tell you this: I do not have all the answers for all the city's challenges, but what I can...
Mr. Spanbauer.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Tompkins.
Hello. First, I'd like to thank everybody in the crowd for being here, my fellow candidates, and of course, our sponsors tonight. My name is Kenny Tompkins. Four years ago, I sat on a forum just like this in preparation for my first run in Niagara Falls City Council. At that time, I said, "The city's people are my party." I have shown that and proven it over the past four years. I am a champion for the people in every vote, every action, and every opportunity to make Niagara Falls a better place to work, live, and visit. When I first ran, the circle of people I knew in the city was small. Today, I've had a chance to work with residents and groups from all across every section of our community. My circle has expanded immensely. This is my inspiration. Many people know me because of my work on the Community Memorial Day Parade and Summerfest at the sale. They see me around town pitching in for different events. I'm not afraid to roll up my sleeves and get dirty. My role on the council is what we're talking about tonight. I was the only council member last year to call on the State Controller's Office to weigh in on the $12 million unsecure advance to our casino fund in the city budget. I've worked to lower the non-homestead tax rate of our city every year when they come up with the tax rate. I always worked to bring that tax rate down to try and make it a more equitable share. I've pushed back on attempts to have taxpayers bear more of the city's fiscal burden without showing fiscal responsibility. I am fighting relentlessly for surcharges to be added to tourism-related entities which would add, that cost us for city expenses such as police and fire that we are not reimbursed for. I spent a week riding around with the people at DPW and with code enforcement. I got to try and get a feeling of what they face. It really was eye-opening. I built relationships with our police and fire departments. I have a very strong rapport with the members of the school board and the water board as long as our state officials. I work well with these leaders. While on every vote or action that I take pleases everyone, I have done what I promised to do when I was elected. I do my homework to understand each resolution, I ask the tough questions, and I decide what's in the best interest for those that count on me, all the residents of the city.
Thank you. We'll begin our questioning with Ms. Kenyon, and the first question comes from Tom Darrow.
Actually, a very simple question. You were elected to the Niagara Falls City Council. Of the candidates running for Mayor right now, who do you feel you could best work with?
None of you above. No. I truly believe that I could work with any one of the candidates that are currently running for Mayor. I honestly think that's a slightly unfair question, because the truth is, is that one of them is going to get elected. We don't know exactly who it is, and we have to make sure that we're setting ourselves up for collaboration and a partnership going forward. This is a very important election coming up, and now is not the time for divisiveness, which is why I'm currently staying out of this general election. I'm willing to work with whoever it is that gets in, and I do have faith that with the right leadership, that we're going to help move Niagara Falls forward.
Mr. Miles.
I echo those same sentiments, because I can work with anybody. At the end of the day, I have to be the watchdog. My job as City Council will have to be to make sure that the administration is doing what they're supposed to do with your tax dollars. So regardless of who gets elected, I can work with them, and they can either work with me or they possibly have to deal with me. But you know...
Mr. Spanbauer.
As I said in my opening statement, in my thirty-five years in the private sector, I have been able to collaborate with many people, a cross-section of people. So I really don't care who gets the Mayor. I could work with anyone. I've done it in the past. I will do it in the future. What I do know is I hopefully our Mayor will come in and be able to collaborate with this group of people here.
Mr. Tompkins.
I've proven over the last four years that I can work with the current administration and any group that comes with me. Heck, I even work with Bill Kennedy, so I pretty much...
Our next question will begin with Dante Miles, and the question will come from Mark Shear.
What do you view as the main concern facing the city? And if you were elected, what would you try to do as a council member to address that concern?
I believe that the main concern that we have had in the city has been fiscal irresponsibility. And I say it as I knock doors across the city, that fiscal responsibility, it reigns over everything else. If we're fiscally responsible, that means we handle our money the right way, we direct our money in the right directions, whether it comes to our infrastructure, which also bleeds into the next level of development, because no one wants to develop in a land that looks the way most of our, a lot of our city looks. So I believe that once I get in, like I said earlier, I'm that watchdog. I'm the one that, you know, makes sure that I read these, our... that when we get the, our statements, that the... our budget. Once we get our budget and I read, I will be the one that, and I won't be the only eyes. I want to make sure that we dissect it here and make sure that we put our money where our money is supposed to go.
All right, Mr. Spanbauer.
Well, I'm going to answer that question with a question. Why would I want to live in a city of Niagara Falls where the taxes are high, there's a crime rate that's too high, we have terrible streets, we have no faith in our government, and there's blight all over? And I asked that question because that's the question I got asked when I went door-to-door. And what my response was? I didn't have a response. So I told the young lady, I said, "Well, you're right. The city of Niagara Falls has to do better in providing those basic services to our citizens of this city. Those are basic services." And then it goes back to what Dante says: We cannot provide those basic services because we're bankrupt. Okay, so the quality of life of this city is falling down because we cannot provide the basic services to our citizens. And what those basic services are, are quality of life issues. Our citizens, believe it or not, are not worried about economic developments. They're not worried about downtown. What they're worried about is what's going on in front of their house. What they see is they walk out that door.
Mr. Spanbauer.
Got to yell at me loud.
That's all right. Mr. Tompkins.
Well, I got to say, the biggest responsibility that we have, or the biggest issue we have is definitely our financial means right now, because based off our financial means, everything trickled down. The roads, sidewalks, trees, public safety, everything trickles down. I have been, made it a concentrated effort to try and find other ways to bring revenue into this city without putting the burden any longer on our taxpayer and our businesses here in town. We've taxed them enough. We don't give enough services for what we charge them. We have to look at doing things different. I have brought forth different ideas and resolutions over the past two years. They've been stalwarted because I haven't been of the right group, I guess we'll say. My job, my responsibility is going to find different ways of bringing revenues into this city that will help us and take some of the burden off the taxpayers and the businesses.
And Ms. Kenyon.
There are a lot of things that I hope to do in my four years, but like everyone else up here, and it's no surprise, first and foremost, we need to be able to stabilize our budget. It has to be a year-long process and not something that feels rushed at the last minute or when things are proposed without enough thought or care going into them. I think that during the process, it has to include community input. It should have participatory budget aspects. And then I also think that after the budget is voted on, the following year, we have to have, at the very least, quarterly updates as to how programs are going, what's working, what's not working, just like we've been doing in the private sector. I do an ops review every month. We have to do the same thing. The administration has to present to the City Council. Thank you.
Our next question will be to Mr. Spanbauer, and it will come from Tom Darrow.
We just heard the word "input" from the community. Now, would you be in favor of perhaps once a month, City Council members holding a meeting specifically to hear the comments, suggestions, criticisms of the residents of the city of Niagara Falls? We used to do this several, few years ago. There were City Council meetings. I don't want to recall the meetings. They were the events that took place where they would go out on location. It's been reduced to three budget meetings, hearings this year, the next one in December. Would you be in favor of having perhaps once a month, it's City Hall, not a council meeting, but a meeting where the public can come in and voice their opinions, as I stated a few moments ago?
Well, Tom, to me, that's a no-brainer. I mean, we have to inform our citizens of what's going on in this city. And I can tell you, when we have informed the citizens, you have better voters, you have better communication among city residents. But one of the things I plan on doing if I get elected is to have a weekly or monthly newsletter on Facebook and per email. But as a total community group, we need to go out to the community at different places across this city on a monthly basis or even a bi-weekly basis, and who's ever in council and administration, you take turns going out, question and answers from the community, and that's how we get feedback from the community, okay? The one thing you have to realize, we need to do, we need to know what we do right, what we do wrong, and whatever we do wrong, we need to find out how we can improve it. And sometimes that feedback will come from the citizens that we serve.
Thank you, Mr. Spanbauer. Mr. Tompkins.
When I started on council, we started doing the community meetings like you talked about, and we started doing them every month for sort of different locations that spread around the city. It waned off, and someone decided they wanted to do Let's Talk Budget meetings. I continued to do community meetings. And what we found out what was happening is you'd get less and less and less and less of the public participation. They got to the point where you're buying a hundred dollars' worth of coffee and donuts for people to come into the place, and you're getting five people showing up at the meeting. Love having meetings, talk to people anytime, anyplace, anywhere, but they want to come out. People, they like to talk on social media, but they don't seem to like to show up.
Ms. Level.
As I just stated, I support a participatory budget process. Going door-to-door, it's very clear that our community has a lot of really great ideas. Just as an example, even the new inclusionary playground that went up, that came from ideas from the community. Ken just made, though, a very great point. I've gone to these Let's Talk Budget meetings. They're very poorly attended, and it feels much more like we're being talked at than it's more of a conversation. You mentioned social media. Social media can be a good thing, especially if we could use it to our advantage in this exact situation. What if we did something that was like a forum like this, but then also added on an element where people could participate through adding comments as well on social media? I think it's a great idea.
Thank you, Ms. Kenyon. And Mr. Miles.
To simply answer your question, I absolutely am for these type of meetings, even if it's monthly, because for the last few years, I've been the one on the other side of that platform, fighting and voicing my opinion and actually fighting for the community for the betterment of Niagara Falls. And sometimes you do feel, sometimes you're not being heard. So sometimes maybe we have to get out of the setting of the City Council meeting and just sit down and just kind of chat with the community outside of the agenda items and outside of everything else that goes on in the City Council, and actually just meet with the community and hear their suggestions along with their issues. So I am definitely for it.
Our next question will be for Mr. Tompkins, and it comes from Mark Shear.
What do you think should be done that isn't being done now to address the financial issues facing the city of Niagara Falls?
I definitely think that we need to stand as a unified voice and start making a little bit of noise. Everyone says, "You're asking the state for stuff. The state gives you a lot of money." The state gives the city of Niagara Falls a lot of money because we're a poverty city. What we don't get is for services rendered that we do use down at the state parks in different entities in the area. We're Niagara Falls. We're one of the wonders of the world. We have the Power Authority, Bridge Commission. We have, what, three bridges within a mile of the city. We have the casino here, and we have the state park here. There is no way this city should be a poor city. The problem is that everyone seems to have their own little agendas, and we can't work as a unified front. If we could all gather our forces together, forget about the politics, and work together for the citizens of Niagara Falls, I believe we should be able to go to the state leaders and show them that this is our right, this is our need, and we should reap the benefits of what we have here rather than it all going to downtown New York. That's what I truly believe, and I think that's one of the ways that we can help turn the city around. A unified voice, working together for the good of the city of Niagara Falls.
Thank you, Mr. Tompkins. Ms. Kenyon.
I really have to agree with what Ken said. We have NiPA, the state, the Bridge Commission, and the casino. These are rich institutions around us. They are thriving while we are just trying to survive. Before, in the past, we've been a component of negotiation, but we hadn't been directly the negotiators. We need to make sure that we have a seat at those tables. Part of my job right now is to go to Albany and negotiate on behalf of my health plan with the powers that be, whether it comes to rates or policies or regulations. And I've gone there with, you know, guns blazing, and I've found that that is not always the best approach, and I've gone there maybe being too passive. I found that firm diplomatic approach, making sure that you are there and you have a voice at that table, is incredibly important. It has been very, I've had success with it in my business, and I'm very confident that we can have success with it as well for the city.
Mr. Miles.
I believe that we definitely need to develop more public and private sector partnerships because I do believe that we can't do this on our own. We're in $16 million debt right now. We also spend a lot of time and energy at the state park concerning our finances, and I do believe that we need more development. The Water does a perfectly good job bringing people here, eight to 10 million people every single year. We need help keeping people here. We draw them right to the Water, and when they look up, they see Canada. They see lights, cameras, and action. They see all of the Ferris wheel and all, everything that's so great about the other side of the bridge. I think the thing is, we need to focus more so on this city, build development throughout the city.
Can you repeat the question again? I'm the oldest one here. I don't remember.
Hang on a second. What do you think should be done that isn't being done now to address the financial issues facing the city of Niagara Falls?
Okay, I may be a little different with, other than these candidates. I look at the city of Niagara Falls like I have my household. If I'm spending too much money and I can't make the bills, you know what I'm going to do? I'm not going to look at my neighbor to ask them to help me out. What I'm going to look at is our internal operations. If we took our top thirty money or, or is in this city, the top thirty, it averages out to be $160,000 they average for salary. That's a lot of money, okay? Now, there's nothing wrong with what they do, because the union rules allow people to get overtime. We have to look at the overtime schedule, how it is used, if it's worth using the overtime. And there's times it's better to use overtime and hire people, but those are the things we have to audit. We have to look at every financial line in this city and audit it. And I agree with these candidates, yeah, we got to look at our neighbors, but the first thing we better do is take care of the stuff we can take care of in-house.
Thank you, Mr. Spanbauer. Our next question is for Ms. Kenyon, who comes from Tom Darrow.
The financing of the city of Niagara Falls. Now, the City Council controls the purse strings. The administration proposes a budget, and the City Council does what it can to reduce that budget annually. It seems as though, and the public is starting to voice their very loud opinion about it, it seems as though the code enforcement, Department of Public Works are continuously cut far more than other departments. However, when it comes to enforcing codes, we don't have the people to do it. When it comes to plowing the streets or cutting grass, as we've just seen throughout the summer, we don't have the people to do it. I guess my question is, are you in favor of restoring the level of finance to code enforcement and DPW and any other department that may have been cut?
Yeah, I think that this question really comes down to the fact that we need to work on generating more revenue for the city, because to be able to do that, we're going to need another source of funding, because I don't believe that there's other places where we could make cuts. I think that there's areas where we need to hire more. We need fourteen more police officers on the streets. I'm in favor of hiring more for DPW. There are a lot of trees that need to come down. That's one of the number-one complaints that I hear when I go door-to-door. So I definitely would like to restore that funding, but to do that, we have to look at other areas to raise revenue.
Mr. Miles.
Well, you're looking at someone who was out this summer cutting grass and weed-whacking with the weed-whacker mop. I understand that it is necessary that we have strength, a DPW that's full of strength. We have just cut, a proposed cut of, I believe, eight DPW workers in this next budget. There are, there's so much to be done, and sometimes I believe that we don't look at the realistic portion of it. We don't look at the sidewalks. We don't look at the trees. We don't look at the grass. We don't look at the light around when, when there's an issue maybe on the road or on the highway. These are the things that our DPW is getting called to in the normal, so they need more help, and they do need support. So I would say I am in favor of restoring funds to them.
Mr. Spanbauer.
It's real simple. I mean, yes, I would be in favor of restoring funds if we had them, but we don't have them. Okay, so what do you do at home when you don't have enough funds? You look where you can save money, or you try to get a part-time job, okay? So I agree, we need to increase revenues. Right now, the parking revenues are at an all-time high, $2 million. I think this year, we have the budget. We could actually increase that by doing a better job of watching the parking meters down there, right? The other thing we need to do, and this is supposedly anti-union, we need to look at our unions to come back to the table and say, "We can't afford it anymore. What can you guys do to help this city out, okay? We can't afford these contracts." And you know what's suffering? DPW, okay? It goes back to my opening statement. We can't cut police and fire because of public safety. The union contracts are tough, but we need everyone to come back to the table and say, "What can we do to maybe improve the quality of life for our citizens?" And DPW is very important in that quality of life.
Mr. Tompkins.
Well, this one's tough, because nobody wants to cut people. No one wants to cut down our services for what we give for things. But the reality is, it's X amount of dollars. So the question is, what is the public willing to pay at this point in time for public services? Nobody wants a tax increase, but everything goes up every year. Cost of living goes up, cost of healthcare goes up. These costs have to be absorbed. So either we find new chances of revenue, which is what I'm hoping to do and working on doing, or we have to be willing to take less services than maybe, and I don't like to do this by any way, shape, or form, but again, I was a member of that weed-whacking mob. We need to start helping our neighbors out and trying to help each other in our own neighborhoods. Right now, it's all about the dollars. If we had the dollars, there would be no cuts to public safety, DPW, any of these places. Right now, we need to find other sources of revenue without putting the burden on our taxpayers.
Thank you, Mr. Tompkins. Our next question begins with Mr. Miles, comes from Mark Shear.
This is actually a question from the Chamber of Commerce itself, and it relates to the homestead and the non-homestead rate in the city of Niagara Falls. And the question is, as you know, many of you already know, the business rate is almost double the residential rate, and there's been an approach to equalize it over the years. So the question is, what would your approach be to the equals, the homestead, non-homestead tax rate in the city?
I believe that there should be an addition that protects our local small businesses because they are the bloodline to the city of Niagara Falls. They're why we're still running to this day. It ought to, because when you have big box stores such as Walmarts and Targets and whatnot, they're not really funneling a lot of money into our city. So my thing would be more so is to make sure that we protect. If we're going to have a homestead versus non-homestead tax, I'm not really a fan of. I really like a one-tiered tax system, but if we're going to have that, I think we should put something in place that's going to protect our local small businesses that's still here after years that, even in the midst of our problem and our, our financial situation that we're in, make sure that we put something in place that... that we're in, make sure that we put something in place that protects them.
Mr. Spanbauer.
Well, for the 2020 budget, homestead is at seventeen point six-two per thousand, non-homestead forty point three-four. So how do we equalize that rate? Economic development. And if you read the Buffalo News on Saturday, there was an article about the development in Buffalo. And what it talked about, not about how good Buffalo was doing, it was talking about the suburban communities around Buffalo. It mentioned Chitewauga, Tandawanda, Amherst. There was, there was like ten mentioned. Niagara Falls wasn't mentioned. How the hell are we not taking advantage of the development in Buffalo and reaching out? If it's helping every other municipality, why isn't it helping Niagara Falls? So we need to do a better job of piggybacking off what's going on in Buffalo. The other thing we need to do is, I have not seen a marketing video for the city of Niagara Falls that is gonna go out and get people into a hundred pieces of property we have in Niagara Falls that are commercial properties that are vacant. Where's the video saying, "Come do business in Niagara Falls. We have space, it's cheap, and we need you." And that's the only way we're gonna decrease that.
Thank you, Mr. Spanbauer, and Mr. Tompkins.
Niagara Falls has been its own worst enemy when it comes to this. All along, we got this windfall from the casino, and we said, "We don't want to raise taxes. We don't want to raise taxes." If we'd have kept raising taxes one and a half, two percent every year, we wouldn't be sitting with this deficit that we have right now. I've reached out to how you equalize the homestead, non-homestead rate. The hardest part about it is, it's a five-to-seven-year project to do it, and you have to have like-minded thinking the same. The problem is, the council changes every two years, and the mayor can change every four years. It's very hard to get a unified voice to work. We can't keep taxing the way it is. Again, I gotta go back to economic development. John says, "Our city's known for not easy to be doing business with." We need to start learning to open our arms, welcome our arms. Developers want to come in, let's show them the road. Let's not make them build the road. Let's take them and lead them, and let's be more business-friendly and try and get more people to come here. We are our own worst enemy. We need to change that, we need to be more business-friendly.
Thank you, Mr. Tompkins. Our next question is from Mr. Spanbauer, and it comes from Tom Barrow. Oh, I'm sorry.
No, no, that's why, honestly, everyone did a really great job answering this question. I think we all have a very similar sentiment when it comes to this. I think most people you talk to believe that we should try to equalize the tax structure. If you want to do that, you definitely have to lay out a five-to-ten-year plan, as Ken said. You can do it in very small increments, because you have to remember that without enough revenue growth, then you're going to shift that unfairly onto the residents as well. So whatever it is that we plan to do, we have to make sure that we have a solid plan in place, and that it does involve, as John said, economic development and revenue growth.
Thank you, and my apologies, Ms. Kenyon. And now, we go to Mr. Spanbauer and Tom Barrow.
Yeah, I'm not sure this should be put on the shoulders of candidates for Niagara Falls City Council, but a couple of you have mentioned the fact that we're out weed-whacking this summer. The city's not just short of money, it's short of pride. And drive down Farid or Walnut Avenue, you will see weeds growing to great lengths outside, under the curbs. How can we restore pride in this community? The people don't have pride to take care of their own properties any longer. Is there any suggestion that you can offer that could possibly lead to the restoration of pride?
Well, I think first, the citizens have to have confidence in their leadership to start putting pride back in the community. That's one thing. The other thing is to do exactly what this gentleman did, by example. You go out there, what did you start with, two or three people? And then it built, there was a snowball effect. So if we get people that care, you're gonna get more people that care. And that's what we have to do in this community. The problem with our community right now is there's too many people down on it. We have such a good community with some good things in this city happening. It's a matter of building on that and trying to get Roger Spurback is here, who used to oversee fifty block clubs. What do we have, three now? We need to get the block clubs back, we need to get the community back.
Mr. Tompkins.
Instilling pride is tough. It's something that I was brought up with. I know the people on this table here are brought up with it. We have pride in what we do, we have pride in our neighbors. A lot of stuff that's happened in Niagara Falls is that we've become a poverty-based city, a lot of rentals, a lot of stuff. People that don't have investment in their property and investment things don't seem to care as much about their property. We need to discourage slum lords in tenancy and try and build programs that gives us homeownership, so people can then have that pride. But again, everybody can lead by example. You got that empty lot next to you, cut it. You got an older person down the park that doesn't get around? Does it really take you that much longer on a city lot to go out there and cut their grass or trim their bushes or something like that? Step up. We can do, show pride, get pride back by showing by example. Everybody can do a little bit, and it snowballs. When we were out there weed-whacking, people would come up to us and say, "Wow, this is great." They'd join us, they'd bring you drinks, they'd join on top, they'd give you garbage bags. They'd come out with the equipment, "Here, donate this to you." It's been a wonderful, wonderful feeling. A lot of words, but a great feeling.
Mrs. Kenyon.
I agree that we have to lead by example, and that things like what I do with LiveNN and the community cleanups I do are important. But that is only one small aspect of being a leader on the Niagara Falls City Council. I think we have to move past electing pothole politicians so that we can restore faith in the community, and people will see that once we can stabilize our budget and that there's fiscal security, so people know that they can see a return on their dollars, so their tax money is going to fix the roads and the infrastructure and investment in downtown, that that's when you're going to start to see the pride returned to individuals. So it's gotta go beyond those potholes and start to go to real policymaking.
Thank you, Ms. Kenyon, and Mr. Miles.
Restoring pride, I have the, I have the honor of having two parents that pretty much, and they're here, that raised us that way, to be pride, have pride in our things, in our clothes, and make sure your iron, make sure your clothes are ironed, make sure your knee, make sure. So I think a lot of it is, it starts in the home, and like we were talking about the weed-whacking mob, at the end of the day, this is my city too. So if there's a problem, and I have the means to actually fix the problem, instead of posting it on Facebook, it was easier, it felt better. And for those of us who did it, when we got done, it felt better, it was just a good feeling. We would look at, we would look at what it was, and see the before and the after, and that right there, that started bringing more pride to just us, that we're there. That's what started the snowball effect. That's why other people began to join us. So I think if we just do what we gotta do for our city ourselves, that's where it all begins.
Thank you, Mr. Miles. The next question is to Mr. Tompkins, and it comes from Mark Shear.
It's been a number of years now since the city's done a reassessment. And so what are your thoughts on, and is that something that you think should be done? Maybe with the course of your term, just what are your thoughts on reassessment?
Reassessment's kind of a double-edged sword. While I see the need where they talk about it, I still, when they come up to you and they say, "One-third's gonna go up, and one-third's gonna go down, and one-third's gonna stay the same, and it's gonna cost us a million dollars plus to do it," I don't understand where the advantage to doing the reassessment is. So until they can really explain to me, and I've asked, and I've asked, and I've asked, and they never really put it out in black and white terms, and I could sell it to the people that it's necessary, I don't understand the reassessment at this point in time that I'm willing to do it. It's a very big cost, and if they're saying everything's gonna stay the same, they just have to prove it to me different, whereas it's beneficial to spend that million dollars that we truly don't have at this point in time.
Ms. Kenyon.
I promise to always be transparent in my answers, even when they're answers that people may not necessarily love. If the vote were to come to me tomorrow for reassessments, I would vote no. However, we have to stop running from this conversation. We haven't had a full reassessment since 2003. If it's going to be something we're gonna do, then we have to start talking about it, we have to start planning for it, and we have to make sure that it's part of a larger picture and involves community participation, participation, to make sure that everybody is comfortable with how we're going to move forward.
Mr. Miles.
Eventually, we're gonna have to reassess. With that being said, we have to build a city that our residents are proud of. If the roads aren't being paved, the potholes aren't being filled, and we're just coming back and asking for money, it's just building a level of distrust between, you know, the citizens and our government. We're not reassessing to bail out this management of our government. You know, at the end of the day, we have to make sure that we're transparent and we're accountable. We need to build a city before we can ask, before we, I understand reassessing. I understand the seventy-three percent that we need to be at. But we have to make sure that our city is up to par, so we'll, the residents will understand why they should have a reassessment.
Mr. Spanbauer.
I'm gonna be short on this, because I'm gonna bring something else up. No, not at this point in time. But what I do want to address is, this was a mailing that went out by the Cleveland Firefighters Union. Many residents received this mailing. I do not expect to get endorsed by the unions due to my fiscally responsible ideology, but I do want to address a couple of things about this mailing. And I will mention Dante in this. I too want to ensure our public personnel and our other employees in this city have the appropriate equipment to do their jobs in a safe and efficient manner. The mailing stated, "We need a city council that puts the safety of our residents first." Because I am not endorsed, because Dante is not endorsed, does not mean we cannot put our city residents first, okay? In fact, my goal is to work with every union in this city to improve upon the public safety in a cost-effective and a resourceful way. So I wanted to make sure I addressed, because we're not endorsed, does not mean that we do not care for public safety. It's a pride of both of ours.
Our next question begins with Ms. Kenyon, comes from Tom Barrow.
You have all gone door to door for petitions, of course, in the snow in March, and most recently in the summer soliciting votes. When you talk to the average citizen of the city, regardless of what section of the community they lived in, what did you hear is the number-one problem facing the community? And how do you go about fixing it?
That is a great question. Going door to door, first off, in the winter, collecting petitions, my pen froze several times. It was quite a process, but I really enjoyed it. I got to spend a lot of time talking to the community. Everyone, almost everyone, had the same complaints, trees and sidewalks. We need to implement a 3-1-1 system to do a better job of tracking all of those requests that come in. Right now, DPW uses six different systems to track all of the calls. And what happens is that people end up going to the same house multiple times without knowing that somebody has already been there. It's not an efficient way of doing this. There is, it's a, it's like Logitech, I forget the exact name, but with the 3-1-1 system and this tracking system, we can be more efficient in how we're able to go out and take down those trees and fix problems as they arise for residents.
Mr. Miles.
It's been pretty much the infrastructure, but also the dilapidated housing that sits untaken, untaken care of in the city of Niagara Falls. I think that's one of the big ones that I've experienced a lot. What can we do about it? Those people who hold this property and hold our city hostage with eyesore of buildings that's not being taken care of, I think we need to have something established that holds them more accountable, whether it's solid fees, and we have to be very aggressive. This is, it has to be a disruptive approach as it pertains to us actually holding these homeowners, and a lot of them who don't even live in the city of Niagara Falls, and they couldn't care less what it looks like. We have to hold those guys accountable.
Mr. Spanbauer.
You know, I think I answered that question when I posed a question back to the audience, but I'll give you an example of what happened going door to door. If you guys raise my fees, or you guys raise my taxes, I'm moving out of this city. And I'll tell you, that's a sentiment of people who have the disposable income that can move out of this city. If we do anything more of raising taxes and charging fees to our citizens, our citizens who can move out of this city are going to move out of this city. We have to keep our tax-paid citizens in this city. It is very difficult, very difficult for the average citizen to understand when we have sixteen percent of our workforce making over a hundred thousand dollars, most of them not paying health insurance, to go to a door and tell people, "Well, you know, we might have to raise your taxes." And I can specifically remember a lady from Longhorn Steakhouse, just got out of work, grease on her shirt, she goes, "I make forty thousand dollars a year, I pay three hundred and fifty dollars a month for health insurance." We're gonna raise her taxes? Nope. That's my experience.
Mr. Tompkins.
My experience is pretty much trees, sidewalks, and the blighted of the houses that we run into. So as far as trees and such go, A, we work with DPW all the time. But myself, along with Councilman Kennedy, a lot of help from my wife, we just put together a grant that we just got approval of, a little over two hundred thousand dollars from Greenway Money to take out a bunch of trees. We tried for more in the city, but it wound up, it's gonna come out of the parks, but it's trees that will be coming out of the parks. Code enforcement is what's lacking here in the city of Niagara Falls. And I don't blame the code enforcement officials. They have no teeth. We need to get home rule, we need our state leaders to help us move forward, get home rules so that they can issue fines on the spot, because our housing court in this city absolutely sucks, and we need to do something to get around them so we can start holding homeowners, renters, or slum lords, people accountable for their property without waiting six months, eight months, a year down the road. We need home rule that we can issue fines on the spot and start hitting them where it'll count.
Our next question, actually, ladies and gentlemen, our final question will go to Mr. Miles, and it comes from Mark Shear.
This is actually a question from a resident, but it's something that comes up again and again and again. It's this building right here that we're sitting in. What do you think of the condition of this building? And do we just keep pouring money into this building and keep repairing it? Or do you think it's time to move on to something else, another building, maybe?
As a full-fledged library, I'm going homegrown, born and raised here in the Falls. I would like to see this building, I still see somewhat potential to turn into something like a cooperative space type situation, a business center, a community development space, a, some, a scale, maybe a scaled-down library. We may need to move the library to another area, however, a place for activities for families. But that's, that's pretty much my opinion, but I do, we, I believe in our, we have a committee, actually. We have a committee that sits on the board for the library, and I believe that they will come up with a proper solution that would actually help the city.
Mr. Spanbauer.
Here's what I can tell you. The brick-and-mortar libraries that us guys here used to go to, people don't go to the libraries anymore. There's so much on the internet. People can do work, high school, college students, on the internet. I think this library has a use. I know there's a committee that two of our council people are sitting on, and they're looking at the possibilities of, what do you do with a building like this? I don't know the budget well enough to say we should keep this building or not keep this building, but when you have a forum like this, this is a nice facility to have. You know, I think one of the things we have to do, if we're thinking about closing this library and relocating the library, we need to look at a private developer to come in and maybe use this for a business entity. My daughter works at Geico. She told me that they are looking at space in Buffalo to expand. Maybe that's one of the things the city needs to do. Come and show this space before we do anything, see if we can get some business in here that might be interesting. Very unique building.
Thank you, Mr. Spanbauer, and Mr. Tompkins.
I'm pretty plain and simple on this. This building's been a white elephant since day one. I don't want to spend another penny on it personally, but I'm sure we're have to, it means so much work. I'd like to see us move it back to the Carnegie Building. I'd like to see community development move to City Hall, so we're all under one roof over there. I'd like to see our archives and our things brought over to the train station, the empty half. I'd like to see it made the Niagara Falls Museum. We'd have the underground museum on the one side, Niagara Falls Museum and our archives in a brand-new climate-controlled building. That's what I'd like to see. I'd like to see this shuttered. If a developer would like to take over, great take it. If not, let's find the funds, let's demolish it and figure out something else. This building's been nothing but trouble. Right now, it needs a new boiler system, it needs a new heating system. We're gonna have to drop a million dollars into this building. It's time to make a decision.
And Ms. Label, I'm sorry, Ms. Kenyon.
I think that the library is a very important part of the community. For example, it gives access... access to the internet for individuals who may not have it. My daughter comes here actually once a week, so we do use the library. If we were to move it, I would want to see what the cost of that would be and what the cost would be to move all the archives that are currently housed here. And if we were to do that, I will say that I have hope that this library, the building itself, could be repurposed. As a quick example, the Westside Bazaar in Buffalo became a thriving business. It started in a small, little location, and now it is going to be moved into a large warehouse that has sat vacant for a long time. So, if we can start development and spur development in this area, this would become a desirable building. Thank you.
That concludes the questioning. We will now have closing statements from all of the candidates. Your statements are two minutes, and we'll begin alphabetically as we did at the start of the debate with Ms. Kenyon.
Thank you again. Thank you all for coming out. I really appreciate you all being here and taking the time out of your busy lives. This is a very important election coming up. We're having a complete turnover of administration. We have to make sure that we are electing leaders who have not only a vision for the future and what it is that Niagara Falls can be, but also the ability to solve some of the very real problems that are currently plaguing us. I believe that with my background and my executive experience, my passion for the community, that I can be that leader, and I would really appreciate one of your two votes in this upcoming election. I'll be sticking around afterwards to answer any questions, so please, if you want me to elaborate on anything more, or if you don't like something I said, just please talk to me about it. I look forward to speaking with you all tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kenyon. Mr. Miles.
I'd like to thank everyone that's here, our moderators, and everyone on the stage, because I do believe that we all do have a passion for the city of Niagara Falls. I've been saying from day one that my race is the people race. I believe that people are our greatest asset right here in Niagara Falls. And here's the honest truth. As a city council candidate, I'm one of five votes. That means we're going to need people participation. We're going to need people. I need you just as much as you would need me. I would need you to sit in those seats at the City Hall, look me square in my face when I'm getting ready to vote on how I'm going to spend your money. That's big, because that's what we're about. We're taking care of the budget. We're deciding where your money is going. You need to hold us accountable. The only way you can hold us accountable, I said a lot, you can't do it on Facebook. You can't do it on the phone, talking to your friends and family. You do it at City Hall. We need people present. I can't change Niagara, there's not one of us that can change Niagara Falls, and we have to work as a collective body as city councilmen, and we also have to work and have a decent relationship with the administration. But outside of that, we need you there. We need you present. We need to include you. That's the only way we can move forward. If we don't include you into the process, there's nothing that we can do on our own.
Thank you, Mr. Miles. Mr. Spanbauer.
John Spanbauer, the semi-retired guy that just wants to spend some time with his family and friends, does not want to be here right now. I do not want to be into politics. John Spanbauer, the tax-paying citizen who wants to be an advocate for the taxpayers of this city, is the only reason I'm up here, and it's the only reason I want to be in City Hall. The city needs to regain the respect of all who deal with it. First and foremost, we need to regain the respect of the citizens we are elected to represent. Let me say it again. First and foremost, we need to regain the respect of the citizens we are elected to represent. If I'm elected, I will not make decisions to satisfy outside interest groups or simply to make people happy. I will make decisions that are in the best interest for this city and the city's taxpayers. My recommendations for the voters of Niagara Falls is to put political parties aside and vote for the candidate that will be an advocate for the taxpayer. Don't vote for a political party. Vote for the candidate you think will be the best to lead and a candidate will bring fiscal responsibility to this city. I want you to consider voting for me so I can help you. That's my closing, but since I got time, I'm going to go finish my opening, because I got to cut off. So, let's go back to what I said. I can tell you, I do not have all the answers of the city's many challenges, but what I can promise you is that I will learn about our challenges, work diligently to solve our challenges, and be the councilperson that is a voice for you, the taxpayers of Niagara Falls. Thank you.
Thank you for your opening and your closing.
Thank you for the time.
Mr. Tompkins.
The last four years have been both wonderful and challenging. Without a doubt, there are greater challenges around every corner. There's no guarantee that we'll ever see casino floods. So, once again, the city needs to live within its means. We're going to have to make tough decisions, and we're going to have to get creative and consider options to save money without compromising the safety and quality of life to the residents. I'm up to the challenge. I have been the last four years. I will continue to fight for fiscal responsibility in a more efficient government. I will continue to fight to set the conditions for private development. I work in small business. My family's always been in small business. I get what it's about here in Niagara Falls. I'm going to continue to fight for new sources of revenue. I believe there's a lot of money out there that we are owed. This is Niagara Falls. We are owed this money for hosting eight to 10 million visitors a year here. It is time that we are treated as the gateway to the state power. We are the keepers of the power authority. We are the keeper of the bridge commission. We should be compensated for that. We should not be a struggling entity here. I will continue to push for the most effective ways to keep residents safe and curtail crime. I'll continue to push for improvements in our infrastructure in the fight blight. I want new rules for code enforcement that we are able to start having teeth in what we do and not rely on the judges because they do not seem to care about helping out our citizens. I'll continue to take these actions because I know what matters to the people in Niagara Falls. You are why I'm running again. I believe I made a difference in my last four years, and I believe I can make a difference in the next four years. Please, on November 5th, if you remember my name, I'm Kenny Tompkins, and I want to be your councilman for four more years. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, we remind you, remind you that early voting is now a thing in New York State. You can begin casting your ballots this Saturday at locations. What? Nine till two, yes. Thank you, Mr. Darrow. At locations across Niagara County, or you can do it the old-fashioned way and come out on Election Day. But in any event, we appreciate you being here tonight. We urge you to exercise your right to vote, and feel free now to make all the noise you wish. Thank you for that.